Okay. Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November fifteenth. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Chantet?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron? Baron? Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone? And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have eleven out of fourteen.
All right, thank you. Next up is a reminder to speak directly into the microphone for the B A T V recording. Brought to my attention again that during playback, we're having real trouble hearing some of us. So make sure you can hear yourself in the background in the room. And that way we'll know that it's getting, it's loud enough that it'll get on the broadcast. Okay, item three is approval of minutes for October eleventh, twenty twenty-two and October twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. Any changes, anything anybody saw? If not, can I get a motion, recommend a council approval on those two minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sulfah. Second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? And Chantet? Motion carried eleven to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next is items to be removed, add or changed. Do we have anything tonight? Okay, move right on then to item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Anybody here for something not on the agenda? Anybody online?
No.
Okay. And up next, we'll, uh... We are not past seven oh five, are we? We will have to wait to open the public hearing for two minutes. Do we want to do item seven first and then come back, open the hearing?
Sure.
Okay, let's do item number seven, which is resolution twenty-two one twelve R, accepting a deed for lands and in and adjacent to the Windy Creek development off of McKee Street. And Scott?
Yes, this is a resolution accepting deed for three parcels of land in the Windy Creek subdivision. One is a expansion to the Braver Marsh. One is a small parcel that is an access, would be a future access drive to the cell towers on Branson Drive that's extended. And then the last one is the actual cell tower outlot that is where the cell towers are existing. These were all called out for in the annexation agreement for the property. So the developer has quitclaim these to us. Once accepted and recorded, then these would be city-owned property.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? Pretty simple, straightforward.
Alderman Baron has joined as an attendee.
Okay. If not, I will make the motion that we recommend a council resolution twenty-two one twelve R, accepting a deed for lands in and adjacent to the Windy Creek development off McKee Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Aye. Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. And now, since we are at seven oh five, we can open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three annual budget. Peggy, did you want to come up and run through this? And we did have some questions from last night from the budget meeting that we'll get answered right away here.
I didn't prepare a presentation for tonight unless there were some additional questions. This is just a legal requirement or unless there were some questions from the audience.
Mark, did you want to talk about the differences between what was in the budget and what would be there if we left the rate the same now, or do you want to bring that up later?
We do have the levy.
The levy was where we would talk.
Yeah, I figured we'd talk about that during the levy.
Okay.
Sure.
No problem.
The number I mentioned last night was correct. It's two hundred thousand more.
Okay.
And so if you do decide, we'll just amend the revenue portion of the budget by, increase it by two hundred thousand.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Anybody online have any questions? Okay, got them all out last night and got them all answered. Okay, then can I get a motion to close the public hearing on the annual budget?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Malley, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried twelve to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, up next would be a grant of modification from the city code for mobile home parks, title three, chapter nine, American Mobile Home Communities LLC applicant. And that is ordinance twenty-two fifty-five.
Yeah, I think Salterman, um, yeah, tonight's ordinance would be to consider a request for a modification to the mobile home portion of mobile park regulations that we have in the city code. Essentially, these were created in nineteen sixty-two and amended in the seventies and eighties, but haven't been amended since. We did have a permit that was reviewed and a site inspection that occurred for two Oak Terrace. And during that inspection, it was determined that the existing, or the trailer in the location that was at did cross into Massey View Right-of-Way, which was the right-of-way that we dedicated last year, as well as a slight encroachment also in the Gore Street. The applicant has proposed a revised site plan that would allow them to use the same pad for the new trailer or new mobile home and would allow it to be in a, at least a location on, fully on the property and outside of the two city rights of way at Gore and Massey View. As it's part of the city code and not part of the zoning code, it can be done through requests to the city council, requesting modification or relief from the, that portion of the city code, which we did review with the city attorney and have this ordinance now for you tonight to address the immediate issue of the encroachment with this location. I did note in the staff memo that staff isn't suggesting that we also consider revising these regulations in the future, perhaps to address some of these situations with the existing, replacement of the existing trailers, as well as updating some of the other language in that section. So we do recommend approval of the ordinance before you tonight. And the applicant is also here to answer questions.
Just so that the, the proposed plan is to move it so it's not on the easements, but it is... Does it need a variant, variance since it's not within the setback? Is that what I read?
Uh, so basically the setbacks and the other locational requirements are not in the zoning code. They're in the city code, or the zoning code defers to that section. So it's not a true variance, but it is a request for relief to at least vary seek modification from the setbacks that are in that section of the code.
Okay, so not, yeah, not zoning, but in the code, gotcha.
Right, exactly.
Okay, but regardless, it won't be on the easements anymore.
Correct, the proposed location, it's about a foot, I think, on both locations, but it would be fully on the property owners or the applicant's property rather than that encroachment.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Always amazes me when we find these things out that happened forty or fifty years ago that, you know, the original pad wasn't in the exact same spot or was on somebody else's property or on city right-of-way. I mean, some of these just absolutely amaze me that that happened. And now we have to figure out how to change it and make it right. Okay, there are no other questions. I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance twenty-two fifty-five, the grant of a modification from the city code, mobile home parks, title three, chapter nine, American Home, Mobile Homes Communities LLC applicant, two north or two Oak Terrace Court.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Was the second Malley?
Yes. Correct.
Thank you. Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried twelve to zero.
Thank you. Okay, up next is resolution twenty-two one oh one R, awarding facade improvement grant to Batavia Enterprises for two through eight West Wilson Street.
I'm going to sit this one out.
Okay. Alderman Lehman will excuse herself from this discussion on item number nine. Anthony?
Good evening, council. Before you tonight is resolution twenty-two dash one zero one, awarding facade improvement grant to B E I for two through eight West Wilson Street. This property is located in a historic preservation, historic district, and has received positive review from the Historic Preservation Committee. This grant will help with restoration of the front facade. This will include replacement or repair of rotten wood, trim boards and moldings, washing, paint preparations, painting and more. B E I does qualify for the full maximum facade grant of five thousand dollars. Tonight, we are recommending that city council or Cal approve resolution twenty-two dash one oh one dash R, which is a word in its five thousand dollar grant, facade grant to B E I. Any audience today, we do have Wendy from B E I. If she'd like to come up and provide some additional feedback and information.
Good evening, committee of the whole. Thank you for having me back again. You all are probably very familiar with this building. It's otherwise known as Riverside Commons. It's where the famous limestone is, where we all go for coffee. It's a very beautiful building. If you really look at it, there's a lot of scroll work in that wood. And what our specialists found was that there was, there were many pieces of rotted wood there. I, I, you may have noticed that I have already painted it because of timing and getting it done before the year's end, but I did change the color scheme of the building. It was very outdated. It was looking more like the nineties. Now it looks present day, very neutral colors. One thing that I also did not include in the original grant were, was the new signage for my tenants. I hired an artist, Mark Adams, who also did the kiosks through Batavia Main Street, the windmill kiosk that you see throughout town. He hand painted all of those signs for all of the businesses there. It's been very well received. The tenants seem to be very happy with it as well as the public. And I appreciate your consideration of this grant.
Does anybody have any questions? Just have one. When you went through, are all the iron columns and everything still, structurally still okay on the facade up there?
Everything looked good.
Okay.
Yes.
Cleaned it all off.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that, that's really, to me, one of the key features of the front of that building is, you know, what's there and preserved. And so I'm really happy that you guys are going at it. It's nice to see that you're attacking all the buildings.
Yes, and I'm also in the process of getting bids. I know I won't be able to apply for another grant, but I'm going to be replacing all the windows in the building, hopefully next year, too.
Great.
Excellent. Just wanted to call out the other buildings that B E I has done significant work on over the, the last year and a half, two years. The Newton House, the former post office building, and now the limestone building. All three very prominent places in our community and how much we appreciate the efforts that are being made. Because while you're requesting grants, you're making significant investments far beyond the grant money that we're providing.
Thank you, city administrator. It's the, probably the favorite part of my job. It's completely my pleasure to do these things.
Very happy to see that again on the building on Wilson Street. Did you have another comment?
No, it's just wonderful to see our grant programs utilized so effectively in the community. And like Laura and Allen mentioned, it's just absolutely phenomenal to see, you know, our downtown start to look even better and more with the times and become more attractive and appealing to people that are coming in and out of town every single day. So it's always nice to have a stopping destination for people to acknowledge both our historic, you know, buildings, but also see that we're putting work into it and we have partners out in our community that are really taking it with passion. So thank you, B E I, and thank you, council.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, I will make the motion that we recommend to city council, resolution twenty-two one oh one R, awarding a facade improvement grant to Batavia Enterprises for two through eight West Wilson Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet? And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried eleven to zero.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. And then up next will be item number ten, which is ordinance twenty-two sixty-one, opposing the disconnection of property from special service area number eleven. Yes, Alderman Lehman has returned to the proceedings. Scott?
Yes, this is, this is an ordinance that's proposing disconnection of two parcels. One is a city-owned parcel where the substation is, and the other is a parcel that's owned by the Batavia School District. Both of these parcels were included within the special service area number eleven when it was created back in nineteen ninety-four. However, they really were necessary to be in that because, one, the school and the city both have parcels that are adjacent that are not in that, and we do not contribute any tax money to it. It is a dormant S S A, so it doesn't levy any tax, but even if it did levy a tax, neither entity would be paying property taxes on that towards the S S A. So we have drafted an ordinance asking these two parcels to be deleted from the S S A. The city attorney has drafted this, calling them erroneously included in the special service area. That would allow both the parcels to be excluded, and then we can merge them with the adjacent parcels so that they can be all part of one formal zoning lot.
Does anybody have any questions? Again, we keep finding all these interesting little pieces of property that aren't either zoned right or attached right or whatever questions are, but I'm glad Scott's finding all this and getting these straightened out. Especially if the school districts is probably going to do some work at some point on this property. Okay, no comments, no questions. I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance twenty-two sixty-one, opposing the disconnection of property from special service area number eleven.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
bonds of said city, Illinois EPA. Okay. Dan, you have this?
Yep, indeed. This is a continuation of our discussion from last month. We know that the loans that we can get are at dramatically lower rates through the, the state's program, right around the one and a quarter percent range, which is very attractive. We do know that the project is going to cost more, so we were advised to bring this to council so we can get, um, a, a bonds issued. The, the number was forty-two instead of thirty-eight. There's not a guarantee that we're going to get it, but they did tell us to apply for what we can get for, for these low-interest loans.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
If not, I would recommend to council that we, um, adopt ordinance 22-60, amending the ordinances, um, adopted by the city, Kane and DuPage Counties, authorizing and providing for the issue of sewer bonds for the IEP.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional discussion?
One quick question. Peggy, the additional money that we're going to have from the, for the debt payments, that was already planned for in our stepped increases in the rates?
It, it was not planned for. We've been doing eight percent increases, so as we go along, we may need to adjust one. But it wasn't a dramatic change, and we knew that we were going to be borrowing more down the line.
Okay.
And we're doing rate reviews regularly.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we remember, that that might be something we have to change or, or do differently moving forward with this being more money than we had originally planned for, for that. So. I have no other, no other questions, Dan?
Yep, that's all.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazzy?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly? Motion carried twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. Up next is item 12, which is Resolution 22110R, approving authorization to bind insurance for property liability and workers' compensation. Alderman, Chantet?
Thank you. So the, as, uh, the policy expires at the end of the month. We do know the environment that we're in right now with insurance rates rising and whatnot. Peggy did note in her memo that she was seeking other entities to provide insurance for us or at least compete for the contract for possibility of, of getting some better pricing. So there were blanks in the ordinance, just in case we did get anything new. Peggy, were you able to find any, any additional numbers or any additional detail?
I do have additional detail that I would like to share. Unfortunately, it's not good news, though. So Laura, it's not the connection here in the agenda, so I need to share this screen.
Never get through.
I don't think I do it here, I'm sorry.
Bad news.
Sorry. Did you? Now, do I need to hit share screen, or can I just bring up the?
Once you've got that open, go back to Zoom right now.
Sorry, that was the tax levy.
Oh, no problem. Once you have PowerPoint open, you can go back to, okay. You want to share that, so go to Zoom.
Okay. And then hit share screen.
Yes. Oh, you've got to enlarge it. Anthony's coming to assist.
Okay, good. Oh, over here, I see it. Okay. Yep. Um, no, it's not. It was, was.
Try Edge.
Yeah. It was on the desktop.
There we go.
Okay. Later. Okay, so we received our renewal, uh, information. We didn't have time for travelers to vote for us. They were interested in our business, but they had, they wanted to conduct interviews and, uh, we just couldn't get it all scheduled in, in a week's time for everything that they wanted. So we are going to be looking at them next year. Hopefully, we'll save some money on, uh, the renewal through them next year. But we are with all of our, um, same carriers that we had last year. Property, we had a big increase in property that was added. And also, there has just been cost increases for property insurance due to the cost of rebuilding. Our package item is our liability insurance, and that also increased. We've had a couple of lawsuits that played into that, but also just generally in the insurance market, everything is going up. Um, the big thing to note on here, our largest increase was workers' compensation. It's excess workers' compensation, so we cover the first $700,000 of any claim. And then after that, it would kick in. We have had that happen one time since we've been self-insured. But it went up $25,000. One thing that they did offer is to keep that same rate if we pay for two years. So I do have down here on the bottom where it says prepaid, where I think it's a good idea to go ahead and pay for it, because we know it's going to go up next year. But that's up to the council. It wouldn't be booked as an expense this year. It would be considered a prepaid, so you'd still see the line item in our financials. And then the other thing that was, uh, giving us a lot of headaches this year was our cyber liability. Municipalities, counties are being targeted. And so the insurance companies don't want to have to pay for those things, so they're raising their premiums. They had, um, several email conversations with Howard and myself, and a lot of requirements. I, I believe you all were on the multi-factor authentication as well. That was one of the items that we had. So, um, there's still a chance that they might come back to us before our renewal date and charge us more, because we have an end-of-life server that we cannot change until the first quarter of next year, because it's our financial software. And we've been trying to do the upgrade, and we just haven't been able to get it done, excuse me, because of the firm, not our end. We have everything ready. So, um...
I asked the mayor to stop emailing me to, as, uh, provide gift cards.
Requested my assistance yesterday, mayor.
I've not emailed any of you.
No, we, we know it's a.
Oh, they spelled your name wrong.
Oh, they did. Okay, it's always a telltale.
Yes. And we often get, I, I get emails regularly from department heads asking to change their direct deposit.
Yes.
So it's a good thing, though, that we do the know-before training with all of our employees.
As well as test emails.
Yes, and test emails, because it just takes one click for it to happen. And what I always tell everyone is, it's like, it's not that important. If it says there's a package for you, there's not a package.
Your Amazon.
Yes. Those are, uh, those come in often as well, or your FedEx package. Uh, so unfortunately, that went from $37,000 to $59,000. Um, and then the other items were, uh, the umbrella insurance went up some. I had been looking into increasing our umbrella coverage, but for another $5 million, it would be over $25,000. So, uh, it's my recommendation that we stay with what we're at right now. But if you chose to have a higher limit of liability, we have $16 million right now in excess coverage. And it's, that, I have asked our broker, do other cities have comparable to what we have? And he said there's some that have less, some that have more. It's just kind of where you feel comfortable with. If you have a catastrophe where someone is seriously injured, they're going to sue you for everything that you have under your line of coverage. Hopefully, not more, but that happens. There are awards, as you, I'm sure, know, that, uh, exceed everybody's amount of coverage. But overall, um, the increase is $109,000. The pollution is a two-year policy, so that's split, um, it's $22,000, oops, excuse me, where is it? Yeah, $26,000. So it's $13,000 a year for that coverage. So I have two versions of the resolution. One that is approving the coverage and not including the extra year of workers' comp, and then one that does include the extra year of workers' comp.
One question on, on that piece is, if we did prepay now and say, um, another firm came in with a, a better offer later, can we cancel for that year or are we committed to the year?
We would be committed. And the thing about the excess carriers, there's only about two.
Okay.
That offer that in Illinois.
Getting better deals.
Very slim, yeah. We were with Safety National for many years, and then they started being very expensive. And we moved over to Midwest Employers, uh, two years ago. And we were never offered a two-year option with Safety National.
What's the history on that? I mean, how much, what kind of percentage is that part of it gone up every year? Because I'm sure it's never gone down.
It, it's not been huge increases. This is, when we, when we did have that one large claim, it did take a ju- jump after that for a couple of years. But then after that, it's usually been about $5,000. So this was a, a bigger jump.
This is what, over 20,000 or over 20%?
Yes.
On the, in the increase on it.
But next year could be zero, prepaid basically.
Right.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is, I think we have to.
Increase.
Right, because I'm sure that it's not going to be lower.
I can't imagine.
In particular, we've had quite a few claims, um, in the last year. Hoping that will change, but when you have an aging workforce, that happens, unfortunately.
What we're voting on tonight is only a part of the picture. Our overall insurance picture is not terrible. Uh, when the city moved to, um, the, that global pool, that pool, um, our overall insurance situation improved dramatically. So it's, it's not a terrible situation completely.
The medical insurance.
Right, right. Our medical insurance, um...
Reduction.
We saw a great improvement by being part of the, the risk pool, um, or IPBC. And for being self-insured for work comp, we've actually saved a tremendous amount of money. Our costs would have been, would be much higher if we had to pay first-dollar premiums.
Right. I just want to make sure that, that we, we do highlight that, that for, yeah, this is not, not fantastic news tonight, but our overall insurance picture is actually quite good.
Right. Um, the autos increased because we got that nice new fire engine and some other vehicles, so we've added to our fleet. And so that's why that has increased. They reassessed the value of this building, which was part of the property increase as well. But overall, my recommendation would be to go ahead and prepay for the workers' comp. We have the cash on hand and available, and, uh...
I think that's a better option, you know, if it goes up 20% this year, but we don't go up any for next year. We take that as a 210%, which is closer to what we feel is historical, you know, norm for these. So that, I think, makes that pretty easy to decide that. Is there anybody else that would not be okay with that? I think that's the way we should write it and, and put that in there, take advantage of that, and hopefully level it out over the two years.
Okay.
That sounds like a mo-
I will provide the updated, uh, resolution for the city council meeting.
And did you want to make a motion, Dan?
Uh, I thought you already did.
No.
I was backing you.
Okay, yes, I will make the motion that we, uh, approve Resolution 22110R, approving authorization to bind insurance for property liability and workers' comp, um, including a second year of prepay on the excess workers' comp.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazzy?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next will be item 13, which is a presentation on the 2022 tax levy.
Can we take all, all the levies together, just so we can vote on them in, uh, in succession?
One right together?
Include the SSAs?
Sure. We can discuss that, all those together, and then we'll go back and do each item one at a time to vote on.
Okay, I, I have a short PowerPoint. Well, the mayor isn't here. I wanted to tell him I use this picture from his breakfast. It's a very lovely picture of the depot on there.
Real good.
So, um, as I had mentioned last night at the budget meeting, uh, we have an estimate from the county of one point, uh, almost $2 billion, which was a 7.4% increase in EAV. Individual changes for each homeowner or business will vary depending on where the assessor is in their quadrants. Um, and then, uh, it includes 14.8 million in new construction. We also had 14.7 million in new construction last year. When they do their EAV, it's just an initial. There's always people that are coming in to protest and appeal. And it usually is, is decreased by about 6 million. And so we're estimating that the final EAV will be 1.18 billion. And I prepared this based on what we had in the budget. I do have a slide later on where we can talk about, um, what the increase would look like. But the pensions were, actually, both of them were decreased, um, for the recommended, what, the minimum amount to levy. But neither one of our pension funds are fully funded. The fire pension is doing better than the police. Police is still, I think, around 58%. So my recommendation is to levy the same amount we levied last year to try and kind of boost that up and get the funding behind that, because we're going to have to pay it at some point. The sooner we pay it... We also had fourteen point seven million in new construction last year. When they do their EAV, it's just an initial. There's always people that are coming in to protest and appeal. It usually is decreased by about six million. And so we're estimating that the final EAV will be one point one eight billion. And I prepared this based on what we had in the budget. I do have a slide later on where we can talk about what the increase would look like. But the pensions were, actually, both of them were decreased for the recommended, the minimum amount to levy. But neither one of our pension funds are fully funded. The fire pension is doing better than the police. Police is still, I think, around fifty-eight percent. So my recommendation is to levy the same amount we levied last year to try and kind of boost that up and get the funding behind that, because we're going to have to pay it at some point. The sooner we pay it, we'll start earning interest on that. So it, the fire decreased so much that I did allow for a decrease there of a hundred thousand, but they, their request was for one million thirty thousand, and we have one million one hundred. So we are adding to that one as well. The debt is for the bridge, and that's automatic levy. So the rate in twenty twenty-one was point seven three eight nine five. And based on that dollar amount and the EAV, we were estimating it to be point seven one seven, which was a decrease. And then this was just a chart that showed how the decrease would impact the various homes. But for an average price of three hundred thousand, that would have been twenty dollars. And then I just had this slide in there to talk about if the EAV doesn't end up being where we think it will be, how that would impact the rate, because we don't get the final EAVs until March. And so if the EAV only increased four percent, then we would be at the same rate with this levy amount. But we are expecting it to be at six point nine percent increase. So I, I don't think this is going to be a factor. And then, as discussed by Alderman, your suggestion, if we added two hundred thousand to the levy amount, we would be at the same rate that we are now. And this is what it would look like on the ordinance. We don't include debt on the ordinance. So the number that changed here, based on the ordinance that was posted, is the corporate amount from two point five four to two point seven four. And this shows what the EAV is expected to be, what the levy amount would be. And that's including debt, because the total levy impacts the rate. And this is what we would expect the rate to be. And as mentioned, anything over a five percent increase in our levy requires a black box notice. We contacted the Daily Herald today. They said the earliest they could publish it would be Monday. And that allows still seven days to get us through to the public hearing on the twenty ninth, if you chose to do that.
Mark, did you want to comment now?
Sure. So as everybody knows, I'm pretty stingy, and I've voted down many tax increases over the, over the years. And I don't look at this as a tax increase. I know it's, every time Peggy you go over this, this is not my forte. So it's just always very confusing. But I think the, you know, having that, the levy to be higher and us to have an extra two hundred thousand dollars in revenue and making no additional impact to the residents by, you know, I know every, somebody came up to me in the street today and said, if you're twenty bucks, I'd take twenty bucks. But I'm not taking away twenty dollars from somebody's way I look at it. So I'm, I'm comfortable in saying that we should do it this way, have that extra money, because we always talk about the fact that we need to have that money in the future, that a lot of the infrastructure, long-term, is not sustainable. And you can see that in our city, our state, our country, all around the world. Things are, some of these things that have been around for a long time are kind of falling apart right now, and we need to make sure that we do our part to keep our town safe, basically. You, you start affecting infrastructure and you start affecting safety in the long run. So I'm in favor of going with the higher levy amount for this.
Tony?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Mark, and I kind of liken it to, as you just mentioned with the pensions, you know, they're not fully funded and keeping the rate, you know, we could pay less into those pensions and maybe bring the rate down even further, but it's going to hurt us in the long run. I think, you know, keeping the rate the same and getting that extra two hundred thousand, or keeping that two hundred thousand. So when projects come in the future, maybe we don't have to borrow as much and then pay interest. And so I think I see it as a, you know, savings that can be produced in the future, too. As we've talked about, these infrastructure projects we know are coming, if we don't start putting away for them, then we end up having to borrow.
Well, and I also look at it as, you know, if we keep the rate the same, both with the pensions and with that, the pensions, we will, I don't know how we ever get to be fully funded. You know, and the closer we get to it and the sooner we get there, the easier it is to maintain that into the future, to try to pay those pensions. If we wait and then we have to go back to try to, like, catch up on it, it costs us even more at that point. So, and I feel like that's the same thing that holds true with the, the infrastructure work. And then it's going to be incumbent on us, on the council, to make sure that that extra money that we do bring in, keeping the rate the same, that we earmark that and use that for infrastructure, so that we get the things done that we want to get on the sidewalks, the improvements we want to make, you know, the flooding issues that we've already dealt with, that we know we still have to deal with, you know, make those improvements where it's tangible things that people can see and understand why we kept taking the same amount of money, you know, or the same rate of money as the EAV goes up, so that we can get this stuff done. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, you mentioned a, a important point there about earmarking this. So how do we codify that funds like this end up going to a specific fund that will just be for infrastructure?
We had already had a policy in place where we would capture the growth in EAV. It was just this year, because of the high inflation and the impact of other things on our ratepayers, that I didn't take it up the full amount, because it really grew quite a bit. But normally, we would use the growth in EAV to cover increases in operations. But this particular amount now, we will have always. So we can certainly set aside two hundred thousand each year of those funds without impacting the long-term plans. And you can always change it in, in the future if you wanted to add to that. But we could earmark that two hundred thousand each year in a capital fund for.
An example would be recommendations that are going to be forthcoming from our active transportation.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Because there's not a source of funding for those right now.
And we had talked about that, that, you know, possibly when we got to that point of having real recommendations with some, you know, estimates on dollar values of what we're going to need to do some of that, that maybe that was at the point where we would, over and above whatever our rate was, say, we're going to draw an extra penny or two cents, you know, for a hundred dollar, a hundred dollars, that we would put that aside. So we would earmark that and have that written into what we're doing when we, when we decided that's what we wanted to do and when we're going to raise it, anytime we've ever raised it since I've been involved in the city council. There's always been a justification and a reason, and it's been codified and it's been down. When we added sales tax, we specifically called that out, that that could only be used to pay off the bonds and the fire stations and infrastructure. Those two things were in there, because that way we knew, at the end of the day, when we paid off the fire stations, we'd still collect that sales tax. We wouldn't stop collecting it. We'd keep collecting it, and we'd use that for infrastructure. So I mean, those type of things, I think, we can make sure that we have that codified in. That way, it doesn't matter who's on the city council, that's what they know they have to use that money for.
Yeah, like to make sure that, that is clear with us.
We can draft some kind of updated policy that says that we will designate those funds towards infrastructure.
I think that would be good, because all of us won't be here forever.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, then, because it sounds, everything sounds very positive on this particular way forward, but that would lead me to believe, why are we even debating it? Is there negatives that are not being talked about here?
You mean levying more?
Yeah. I mean, what's the downside at this point? It sounds like.
Not the.
Lots of positives, other than a black box notice. Is there any downside?
No, the, the only downside is, is that we're increasing water and sewer rates and keeping property tax the same. It was just kind of like, well, we're not increasing property taxes, you're saving a little money there, kind of thought.
It was what, twenty, twenty dollars?
It was not much, right.
Twenty, I think it was twenty dollars a year on a three hundred thousand dollar house. I mean, we've had arguments in the past about twelve dollars.
Right.
A year.
So I was trying to think of what direction you would want to go, but I guessed wrong.
I tricked you.
No, Mark, you surprised us. Leah?
The windmill budget again, though. I got you.
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't catch that. What, what were you saying?
We got to protect that windmill budget next, next year, though. Might change his mind on that.
Okay.
So for a three hundred thousand dollar home, with, with the water and sewer increases, what would that look?
It depends on their level of consumption, but it's three percent on water. So if.
And eight percent on the sewer, okay.
And then eight percent on sewer.
But we don't have, like, an average idea for.
I think that it was around a couple dollars. It was not.
Not that.
Not that much. The water and sewer portion of the bill isn't as much as the electric portion of the bill. But it's been nice that we haven't had to have a rate increase. When I was out in the community a couple weeks ago, somebody actually said, oh, we haven't had an electric rate increase in a long time. It's not that bad. I'm like, oh, that's nice to hear.
I have one, one quick question. What, what are your thoughts on keeping the rate the same?
I would recommend it. I just didn't think that the, the council would be receptive to it.
We ordinarily recommend capturing the increase in EAV.
Yes.
And keeping the rate the same.
Because I, we have a lot of things coming down the line here that we know we're going to need funds for. The active transportation plan, the roads. Main Street is way over the estimate. Prairie Street, that's happening next year, way over what originally we thought it would be for those intersection improvements. Unfortunately, it's just the way prices are right now. But we, we will put those funds to good use. And I'll get a policy set up so that it shows that, that you can adopt a resolution indicating that. We don't have to do that right now, but I will get that to you in the, either in December or January.
Did you write that down in your calendar, Mark?
Or should I do it now? Tomorrow, just to make sure that.
No. Wait and get it worded right, make sure it's good.
And so then, the other tax levies that we have here tonight for you to vote on are SSA thirty, which is Prairie Trail South for maintenance of their detention area. And that levy is six thousand two hundred. And then we have the downtown SSA that goes to Batavia Main Street. We've levy less than the forty thousand because of the way the county does, comes up with the rates in the calculation. Money gets diverted to the TIF. And so then we make up that difference between the levy and what comes into the TIF and pay that out to Main Street. So that levy is twenty five thousand this year.
Okay. Any other questions on those? Right. And I guess the first one we would vote on would be item fourteen, which is ordinance twenty-two fifty-six on the twenty twenty-two tax levy. And that would be the one that is modified the way we just talked about.
Yes.
Leaving the rate the same.
That, that will have an additional two hundred thousand entered under the corporate levy. It's the first-line item in the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Chantet, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazzy?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron? Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly. Motion carry twelve to zero.
Right.
And that needs to be on the regular agenda. The other two do not, but the main tax levy does.
Okay, so the, the, the two smaller ones can go on?
On the consent, yes.
Consent, okay. Next then would be ordinance twenty-two fifty-seven, which is SSA thirty tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chantet, second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazzy?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron? Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly. Motion carry twelve to zero.
Thank you. Up next would be ordinance twenty-two fifty-eight, SSA sixty-two tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
By Beck, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazzy?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron? Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Rosado?
Aye.
Motion carry twelve to zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is item seventeen, which is ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine, an ordinance amending the municipal code of City Batavia by adding a new chapter, five D, to Title Three, implementing a retail single-use bag program. Dan, you want to start this, or do you want me to just have Laura do it?
As I say, do you want to turn over to Laura?
Okay, that's good. So it was several months ago when the Batavia Environmental Commission came and provided a presentation recommending that the city adopt a fee for single-use bags. And following that, the members of the Environmental Commission and members of staff and the Chamber of Commerce and worked together on developing a, a program to move forward. We worked on coming out, finding a firm to work with, who will be developing an educational campaign, and we have interests from other neighboring communities in, in joining us in the educational campaign, seeking to get people to voluntarily change their behavior to stop using the single-use bags and bring their reusable bags when they go shopping. But in addition to that, staff was directed to draft this ordinance, which would, at some point in the future, implement the fee for larger retail organizations. And so today, before you, I have an amendment to Title Three, the Business and License Regulations, Chapter Five, which applies to merchants dealing in products, and Article D, a new Article D, single-use bags. And so I've highlighted in, within the text, perhaps some of the things that you may want to focus on in determining to which retailers this applies. want to focus on, um, in determining to which retailers, um, this applies. And then also, um, I asked Anthony today to call each one of our retailers who would be five thousand square feet or greater, and, um, he can provide some feedback that he received from, um, those stores. And I don't know if there's anyone in the audience today who might be from any, um, anyone interested in speaking. So, um, we looked at the Woodstock ordinance as a model for this. And then the individuals that, um, were, we worked with on the Environmental Commission, looked over and had an opportunity to, to make any changes that, um, they would want to see here. So what we've got are, um, it applies to both, um, paper and plastic bags. Um, the size of the retail establishment that it applies to is five thousand square feet. Um, and then I think maybe, you know, another thing to focus on is when would be the effective date of this, um, is July first, twenty twenty-three. And then in addition, there was a repealer in there that, um, said that, that the city council would look at the ordinance at some point in the future to determine whether they wanted to continue that or not. And with that, I'll just leave it open to, uh, discussions or any questions that people have.
So basically, the option between, uh, when we see how effective the communication plan is in, in this, with this firm, before it actually goes into effect?
Yes. So you would have the opportunity at any point prior to the effective date, if you felt that that was having a significant input to repeal the, um, ordinance.
And is there a specific report that we're going to get from the firm that's doing the communication or?
No, um, what we're thinking is that we would have to initially, um, survey the retail establishments to, uh, find out what the baseline of single-use bags that they are currently using. And then, um, have them develop the tracking that they would, uh, use in the future if they have to charge for these bags, but maybe they are just charging zero for the bags at this point. And that way, um, they will in that way be able to keep track of how many single bags they use over the period of time that the educational campaign is running. Is a thought in my mind, but we still have to work that out with the, with the retailers based upon what you decide about who this applies to.
Yes. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, um, if anybody would like to discuss the possibility, another exemption. I don't know how it would be worded. Um, but if there's an establishment that is, the, the bag is part of like the identity of the establishment. So I think, like, if you were to go, we don't have a Binnie's around here, but if like you were to go to a Binnie's and you were getting a nice bottle of wine, and then that bottle of wine came with a single-use bag that was meant for like gift giving almost. Um, so it's part of the gift, I guess. And it's a single-use bag because it's paper, um, or it's a, or it's a nice plastic or whatever it happens to be. Is that something anybody would consider as some sort of exemption?
Yeah, could that go in, under the list of, um, a carryout single-use bag does not include, and then there could be a definition of a gift bag, a gift wrap bag?
Yeah, because I think there are a lot of, you know, what I'll say is more some of the little smaller boutique shops that are in town. I know one cover on some of these, but sometimes that's part of why you purchase that is, or the way you purchase that is in a gift bag that usually only gets used once, especially if it's got a name of business or something on it.
Almost all of the paper bags do have the names of the business on them.
Yeah, but they're not a gift bag.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but I wouldn't consider a paper bag from. Okay, got it.
So as to the list of the five thousand square feet businesses that would be applicable to in Batavia, that would include whom again?
You're saying who's covered under the five thousand square feet or the gift bag?
The five, uh, gift bag, I'd.
Anthony, do you have the list of the, it is, um, only a list of approximately seventeen businesses, and it includes, um, the grocery stores, all of our grocery stores. It includes Menards, Target, Walmart.
What larger gas stations like a Speedway? Or Casey's, I'm wondering if the new Casey's.
The Casey's is, is on there.
Is over five thousand.
Yes. Speedway may also be on there.
That's one thing I've seen that irritates me is when it gets like, you know, one or two cans popped and in a bag, just going to be consumed in the car.
Laura, so on this particular list, uh, we had people like retail businesses like Ace Hardware, Advanced Auto, Aldi's, Berkeley Finer Foods, Dollar Tree, Goodwill, Hobby Lobby, Jewel Osco, Kay Hollis Jewelers, Kohl's, Menards, Office Max, Pet Boys, Petland, Sierra, Target, Trader Joe's, both Walgreens in Batavia, and Walmart Supercenter.
And then Anthony, did you get, did you have any feedback that you'd like can share with us with any of those seventeen businesses?
Uh, basically, you know, with many of the businesses, a lot of the businesses have looked at, you know, uh, an understanding of single-use plastic bags, but the challenge has been, why paper bags? Why isn't that a better alternative compared to plastic bags? Why are they, why are you looking to completely, uh, eliminate paper bags? For example, with people like Trader Joe's or Whole Foods, places like those who use paper bags? Why, why isn't there more education as to why, you know, we look at plastic and also put in the same category as paper? And I know we've discussed this here at, at the council meetings and cow meetings that, uh, the issue with, uh, biodegradability and the landscape, but, you know, that's still a piece of education that a lot of the businesses are trying to understand is, you know, these are carryout bags and not like plastic. So that's been one of the, uh, concerns, uh, for the retail businesses. Um, overall, it seems as though many of the businesses are in support of an environment and, you know, uh, implementing other opportunities to use reusable bags. Some have already, uh, designed bags that could be used by customers. Um, I know Trader Joe's, uh, they have reusable bags and bringing in programs to help people better understand why they're using reusable bags in addition to their paper bags. But I would say the general consist, consensus was better education as to why we're trying to ultimately, uh, eliminate both, uh, plastic as well as the paper bags.
And just as a reminder, one of the main reasons is that, um, and this is a great piece that would obviously be integrated into the education campaign, is that the, the resource footprint to actually produce paper bags is so water intensive and resource intensive that while it's not oil-based, it's still a massive amount of energy and materials that goes into creating them, um, disposing them. It's not guaranteed to be recycled. And while it will biodegrade faster than plastic, it's still a very, very long time table before that would leave our environment, so.
Sarah, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Alan. Uh, yes, I just wanted to comment on Alderman Uwer's point about, um, the single-use bag in terms of something that is small and, um, designed as more of a gift. I think that that is a reasonable setting for an exemption. Um, reading through everything and through other research, the thing I feel like we're trying to mostly accomplish is the mass amounts of plastic bags, just getting those and single-use bags in general, um, but getting those mass amounts out of our system and out of our habits and everything. So I think that that is a reasonable approach, exempting something small, specific, gift-oriented. So I wanted to speak in support of that. Thank you.
Leah?
Um, which of the seventeen of these retailers would be considered locally owned versus like a national retailer?
Um, Ace Hardware is a locally owned store. Um, Kay Hollis Jewelers is a locally owned store. I'm not exactly sure of the ownership, uh, how Pet Boys works, if it's a franchise or if it's a corporate-owned store. Um, Casey's, I believe, is corporate. Um, Speedway is corporate for sure. Walgreens is corporate.
But Barclays?
I'm not sure.
Something I've kind of been pondering is, for the first rollout of the, the bag packs, if, uh, we start with the national retailers, um, especially since a lot of them have already implemented this in other towns and other states, um, they're familiar with the process to some degree. Um, start it there and make changes as needed. And then we do like a second rollout in another year or two with, um, in, you know, so instead of like it all being one mass rollout, we do it, we stage it more. Um, that was one that I had. Um, and pertaining to the, the paper bags and the concern there, I mean, Aldi has been charging for their paper bags for, I don't even know, years, forever? I don't, like, it's, it's not new to be charging even for a paper bag.
Your honor?
Yeah, you know, I have gotten several calls at the office and, you know, I'm out and about, so a lot of people have the opportunity to tell me what they think. I don't know if I hear a major opposition to this idea in Batavia, but what I do hear is there is some real concern by people who own pets as to, they use bags, whether they're paper, they're plastic or whatever, to walk with the dog and stop and pick up its, its disposals and whatever have you. And they're asking me, what's the city's idea for me to clean my dog up? And I don't know if I've heard what a good idea is on that, but that's, that seems to be one of the things that's really kind of out there at the front of this whole thing as to how we, how we deal with that. And I know a lot of people who are out there dedicated to walking their dog and carrying with them, you know, some type of a bag or something that they can pick up, whatever the dog has disposed on somebody's lawn or sidewalk or whatever have you. And I think that's a good attribute for Batavia to have, and we certainly want to do something. But, you know, I've had people saying to me, well, if you don't let me get a bag in the grocery store or the hardware store or whatever, what's going to be my ability to get something to pick the dog's poop up with?
Sarah?
I would, what I would say to that is they can pay ten cents for a bag, well, for one thing, but more importantly, they can get biodegradable bags that are intended for that.
And almost.
At you specifically. So everyone that owns a pet and walks them every day isn't putting a, uh, bag that's going to be with us for thousands of years into a landfill for every time that.
Well, I think with this program, there needs to be some education.
Right, exactly.
People about it because some of them don't understand all that. And they're thinking that somehow or another they're going to be left up the creek here and.
I think that's part, part of the education part of it. And I think it's really important for people to know that there are other alternatives to saving, you know, a hundred Target bags and using that to clean up after your dog, is that almost every vet that I've seen, especially locally, comes up with either the little dog bone that hangs on your, uh, um, their logo, you know, something printed on there from the vet, or somehow, some way, they're all available at almost every, you know, pet supplier out there. And it's literally just a little, little roll of the, the, you know, biodegradable bags that you can use for that. So I think that's part of education that, to me, is really where that has to come in. And that there are a number of options for that compared to just saving, you know, whatever plastic bags you happen to grow and the giant bags that live in houses.
Well, I think there's a strong sense of understanding in Batavia that in the last five years, the number of pets has increased dramatically. I mean, there's many, many more people with specifically dogs than we've ever seen before. And there's, I'm not a problem, you know, I have any problem with it, but I mean, there are those particular issues that kind of trail behind it that you have to.
And I think that that's, to me, that's one of the easy ones to overcome is that. That's more education, I think, than anything.
That's the one that I, is.
That you hear about, yeah.
On the street from folks. They're not necessarily opposing this, but they're wondering, how is all going to be done? Would somebody please give us the, the whole program?
Right, there's a better way to do it.
Sarah has her hand up.
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you, Laura. Yes, I wanted to comment on that. They do sell biodegradable bags that are specific for dog poop. They are far less plastic. They are biodegradable. And they are, if I read the ordinance correctly, not included as plastic bags as far as the bag fee goes. So it's a win all around.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Abby?
I do. Um, in terms of the education campaign and the timeline, um, a question that I'd had before, and I don't remember the answer, was that if, have we, have we found any examples of where education campaigns alone have worked to see significant reduction in single-use bag usage, um, in the past?
I haven't, uh, researched it.
I have looked at it quickly, and I, I haven't found any examples where the education alone works. So in, in the essence of the goal being to reduce the amount of bags, um, consumed and disposed of in Batavia, um, I'm, I'm not comfortable going with an education campaign that doesn't also include, like, it has to incorporate all of these different things that we're talking about, the misconceptions that are out there. It has to also be an awareness campaign that the dead, that the, the ordinance is going into effect soon. So if we're rolling out an educational campaign without a date of effectiveness, I'm not going to support.
I wasn't thinking that we would. I wasn't thinking that we would do that. I would, because it's going to be very public that this ordinance was passed. I think that that's something that.
The repealer date in there, the repealer date in the conversation about repealing it because we heard that the education campaign worked.
Actually, the repeal date is, uh, after the effective date of it.
Okay.
So the repealer is really something different. I said, if the educational campaign appeared to be, uh, very effective at changing behavior, then city council could decide to repeal the ordinance before it even went into effect.
Yeah, and I, I think that, to me, the goal and the, the real teeth behind getting this to work is actually having the bag fee, you know? And I think especially the education helps that, because I think then that gets people to think of it. I mean, since we've been discussing this, I've really been watching. And, you know, I'm not forcing anybody else in my family to do anything different. I'm trying to do the things different when I go to Menards or go out and really watch how many I use and see what, what it is like to change that, you know, and do that differently for yourself. And it is amazing to me how many bags we have accumulated in like two months, when you really stop and look at it. Or how many you don't use if you really force yourself not to use them.
Education campaign is really an opportunity for people to, um, avoid the fee, right? So that they can have time to, um, develop the habits of bringing their reusable bags with them when they are shopping, so that by the time that this goes into effect, um, they aren't getting charged ten cents per bag. Instead, they're bringing and reusing their bags, like the goal of the program is.
And also look at it as a retail opportunity too, because there can be, even, I don't know that it would be an entire store, but there can be those type of things that are purchased at any one of a number of places that we see in town, including, you know, the, um, boardwalk shops and other places where you end up with a bag. You know, Trader Joe's has their own bag with their logo on it. Every other business that really pushes that has their own logo bags or has bags for sale, you know, right at the checkout that you can, you know, fill yourself of. And that could also be something that if it's, you know, something that seniors don't want to deal with it or don't want to go there, there could be some way we could figure out how to have a program that those get distributed. And that way, you know, we work on trying to make that happen for them that don't want to have to go through finding their own solution to paying the bag fee. Anybody else online have any questions or comments?
I don't see any hands up.
And do we want to address Leah's, um, uh, question about, do we want to change this and stage it? Or, you know, my thought was is that we already kind. it? Or, you know, my thought was is that we already kind of are staging it because we're only doing it for 5,000 square feet and bigger and just leave it at that? You know, at, at this point, just like every other thing that we institute and we set up where somebody has to quantify and report and, you know, pay their portion of the, or separate the city's portion of what the fee is, you know, that's always something that a business has to do. Unfortunately, I think if we start to try to pick this apart and separate it into different pieces or different things, it might not be as effective as if we leave it the way we've got it set up. And I do think that, you know, if this works really well, we may have to come back and talk about, do we change this and add more businesses to it?
So the change that you would like to see is the exception for gift bags? Is that?
That's the one that we wanted to see, and that would go in under the, the single use bag does not include it. I think that's one that I think does make sense.
What constitutes a gift bag?
But typically, don't you buy a gift bag?
Right, you buy a gift bag. I'm thinking of the ones on my wife's American greetings card merchandiser, and they always have, you know, 20 different bags, whether.
With the example.
You want it for a birthday, or you want it for retirement, or you want it for, for that, or.
The question is, how, how is it defined?
Right. How's it defined? Because if somebody's going to say that their brown paper bag is a gift bag, and how, how is it going to be manned and placed in these businesses? Because they're going to maybe turn around and go, oh, this long bag covering this nice item is a gift bag. I think that that puts us in a very peculiar place.
Yeah, I know what, I know what the intent is of like wine boxes, wine bags or jewelry bags.
But you have to go buy that anyways.
That's a product itself that you're purchasing. It's not, it's not like you buy that and then it gets put into a bag. That's, that's the, the product.
Usually it comes, like you said, you buy, you buy a bottle of wine, slips in, or you buy.
You buy the gift bag.
Necklace earrings, and it comes in the bag with a bow. But like, how are we going to write it so that is, that is defined properly and not misused?
Yeah, I don't know how you'd.
Because somebody, somebody could go to Walgreens and buy a gift bag and put their stuff in there.
Just as, as we, I would like to see that on the exemption list, but how do we separate that?
I wonder if it's been an issue in Woodstock, if they've had the.
They didn't make any exceptions for gift bags.
Are any of our neighboring communities talking about doing the same thing? Are we?
Not the fee. They, when I mentioned that we were going to be doing an educational campaign, some of the neighboring communities were interested in joining us in the educational campaign. But to my knowledge, no one is considering.
Saint Charles and Elgin are considering ordinances.
Saint, yeah, I couldn't hear.
Saint Charles and Elgin.
Are? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, if staff or someone, or even the other municipalities have something that they've already written or thinking about writing and can collaborate, so that we have that defined on the exemption list.
Then do you want to take a pause and see what, have me investigate what stage their process is at? And if they have draft ordinances, and then we can bring those back and compare them to what we have here?
No.
Okay.
One suggestion, if we want to move forward with an idea of a gift bag, is I know these are slightly smaller retail spots right now, but where they give a bag with like tissue paper in it. I mean, it's, it's literally meant to be the gift bag for the item that is purchased. So it is packaged as a gift.
But I would contend that's part of the product that you're buying, because you're buying this, this gift. And you could then buy a 10 cent bag and put it into that bag. It's those 10 cents bags that we're trying.
Yeah, it usually comes with.
I don't, I don't, you know, our, our landfill's not getting flooded with, with gift bags. And I'm aware of.
And I think the main thing we're trying to stop is the plastic bag, the single use plastic.
And paper.
Yeah.
The environmental commission and Alderman Beck, you've heard, are pretty adamant that both kinds of single use.
Single use bags.
Cool.
I just see this as a bigger, this is just a stepping point, moving the pin to something even bigger to where eventually we want to expand it to other businesses, smaller businesses, and also include other products. So I see this just as our, as the stepping stone to a bigger part in the process. And one of those easier ones to really take a look at and implement and kind of be the leader with.
And I think this is a big deal. I mean, when you walk past even all the self checkouts that Walmart just put in, everything is a plastic bag there.
Mark has his hand up.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say what Alderman Lehman said was kind of exactly the point is like, you buy something and you're putting the, the paper in it to make it a gift in that bag. So it's all part of that experience. And you could say that that's a part of what you're purchasing, but you could say the same thing too. If we go to a grocery store, part of what you're purchasing is a bag. But it should be, we need to find a way to identify that. That's, that's the only thing that I'm trying to call out. And it's different than, yes, you're not going to charge a tax because somebody went into Target and bought a bunch of gift, gifted bags that they're using to wrap up their Christmas presents. That's, you're not going to charge an extra 10 cents on those, because that's a product. But in, as a gift, whether it's a wine bottle or jewelry or whatever, that's part of the product, I would say. Does that make sense?
We can task the city attorney to see if he's able to come up with language that would make an exception for gift bags.
Doesn't Evanston have a single use bag tax?
No, they banned it outright.
Okay.
And it didn't go.
What's that?
And I don't think it went well. Okay. I mean, to Jennifer's point about this being a stepping stone in hopes of, you know, addressing real change and, and being the start of some real great waste management efforts by the city. The, was the repealer clause in any of the other ordinances that we, we reviewed, or that's?
From Woodstock.
Woodstock? I just looked at Woodstock. I didn't find it in there. I don't know. That one has me a little like, what, what's going to be our, what's going to be our basis for, is it, if we're at 100% without initiating a fee, then we'll repeal it? Like, what's the feeling on, what level would we repeal this?
I don't, I don't see anybody here that, to me, is going to be the one that's going to initiate repealing it.
And I don't see it being, you know, people jumping right in.
Yeah.
Right away. I mean.
It's going to take time.
It's going to be, we're going to have a high rate where people are going to be paying the tax the first year. And then it'll be exciting to watch the second year, how that drops, because people will be like, they've changed their habits. It's going to take some time. You're right, Laura. It is in the Woodstock one. I just found it.
Okay.
It does just, I don't know, just a curious question.
I'm not concerned about that repeal language, because we can repeal anything we pass anytime, anyway. It's the, it's the majority of the council that, that's the repeal. So if, if this repeal had a specific date or kind of a sunset provision to it or something like that, I'd be more concerned, but I think.
It does have a date on it. And the, and what, the meaning there is it holds people's feet to the fire. So that it says, you know, we need to get something done on that because that date is there.
Yeah. So that's the rollout. That's the start date.
Yeah.
If, if there was a date tied to, okay, on, you know, July 1 of 2024, we're going to revisit this, or that kind of repeal provision in there, that'd be more concerns.
Okay. So do we just want to leave it alone then? And leave it as is for right now? And get the education part of it going and then implement it? And then see how it works? And I, I think we're right. I mean, and this is not something that's easy to make this decision, because I think it's, it's a big step, especially when there's, you know, not three communities in a row, or five, or an entire county or anything that's doing this. We're going out there first, and we're going to do it. And I think we're going to be successful with it. I think it's going to work. And I think we'll hopefully see some, you know, substantive change to the way things are done. I mean, I just think of, you know, a couple of the roads that we have around here, every once in a while, you'll see just lined along the side of the road with plastic bags. And that would be nice to not have that happen.
We can leave.
Right. And I'm sure somebody will follow us, just like we're following Woodstock or whoever else we're going behind. It's not a bad thing to do that. Abby, did you want to make a motion?
I move, we, sorry, I have Woodstock's.
It's okay.
Front of me now. Get the right one. I move, we approve ordinance 22-59, establishing a retail single use bag program.
Second. Motion by Beck, second by Wolf. Roll call, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Connelly? Chancet?
Aye.
Zolfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Present.
Zirone? Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Rosado?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay. All right, then we will move on then to item number 18, which is a discussion of North River Street plans for 2023.
Yes. So at the request of Alderman Lehman, we have put this on the agenda to discuss our future plans for North River Street. As everyone knows, for the last three seasons, we have closed River Street and put out a public dining area that all the area restaurants could use, particularly during those times when they weren't able to serve customers indoors. So we're at the time of the year now where we open up the road, because as we saw this morning, snow is coming and it makes it impossible to clean that, that street with all of the furniture and whatnot out there during the winter months. So we picked that up and put it away for the season. And so now we would like to have a discussion about what vision we have for that street going forward, whether we want to continue to close the street as we have these past three years, or if we want to return to the previous times where the street was open, except when closed for festivals and the farmer's market. And we allowed adjacent businesses on the street to expand their outdoor eating areas themselves in an enclosure. And they leased the property from the city and, you know, manned their own tables. And then, or the third option that we have is to have the outdoor public dining in the areas that we can. But are we converting then to the one-way street? So we do have a pending application to permanently convert North River Street to one-way southbound from Spring Street to Wilson Street. But even if we receive that permit, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to move forward with that construction. So those, I think, are really the three options that maybe you'd like to debate tonight. And I see that there are people in the audience here tonight who are, probably like to comment on that as well.
What is the status of?
We are waiting. It is, Gary might be online. Yeah, Gary's online tonight. And he can just provide you with the last thing that we've heard from them.
Right now, we're waiting to hear from IDOT's Traffic Signal Division. They're reviewing the traffic signal plan. That's where the holdup has been, is in the traffic signals.
Well, I think, you know, the, the one issue, the only time I say that that's an issue is during high traffic times, you have to have, at some point, you have to have the green light for the southbound River Street traffic. If we have it one way, it'll have to have a green light at some point. It can't just be, you know, the right on red situation that would be there if we didn't have a traffic light at it.
One of the things we're being told as well is that they might be requiring us to have the audible signals as well.
There's, there's currently no signal for southbound traffic. I mean, southbound traffic right now comes to a stop.
Okay.
There's no signal heads for southbound traffic on, on North River Street.
I thought there was.
No.
You can only turn right.
You can only turn right. Okay. So then we're just waiting for IDOT to figure out what they want to do with the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, actually, we're waiting for IDOT to finalize their review of literally just a pedestrian signal installation is all it is. And it's, as Laura said, it's, it's introduction of audible signals. But it's, it's frankly not even very complicated. It's just taken forever and a day to get IDOT's approval.
Mark has his hand up.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I think for me, that's the, that's the thing. It's like, I'd really like to see this be one-way southbound. It's going to give us so much more flexibility. It's going to then allow traffic to flow through there where we want to flow there, allows us to close it when we want to without having to go through all kinds of hoops. I think you could even configure and with the right, with the right, I'll say barricades, not necessarily what I'm envisioning, but the right things on River Street, you could still have it open and you can still have outdoor dining and you can still have things happen without taking up the entire street with tables. And then on weekends, whether that be Thursday through Sunday, we, we close it or something to that effect. So I'm hopeful, and, and I guess, Gary, the question would be, when's the latest date that we can get approval from IDOT and still be able to do the construction we need to do to make it one-way southbound so that we don't have to put up those barricades again?
So there's two things there that you touched on. One, and staff has consistently been opposed to this notion that every Thursday, we're going to go out and close the road, and then every Sunday, we're going to go out and open the road, and then Thursday, close, and Sunday, open, and do that all throughout the season. That, that's a big drain on staff. So we are, we have talked about the ability to close it at State Street, and then it would just be closed going south of there. And we also have talked about leaving it open to traffic. And as you said, placing planters or benches or whatnot, so that you can still have it open to traffic and still gain some space on the sides for outdoor dining. And then it's kind of a little bit for everybody, as opposed to this notion of somehow going out and closing it every single week. That's one item. The second one has to do with construction timing. When we talked about the one-way southbound, this year, when we were contemplating going forward with it, we had said we were going to try and get it done by Memorial Day. And we had made that statement in the context of the 2021 construction season and how things went. Now that I'm talking to you in the context of the 2022 construction season, this year was a mess. If you recall, there were labor strikes at the early part of the year. Our contractors were scrambling to get work done. So I don't know that I feel confident telling you it can all be done by Memorial Day. I, I don't have that confidence at all. I know there's already been a request to start farmer's market even earlier. And I, I think that, I, I don't, I don't have a, a confident that we're going to be done with construction, you know, in early May. I, I could see construction going in, well into June. I mean, I might say the 4th of July is, well, it's Memorial Day this year.
Happy dog. Leah?
Gary, quick question. If it is turned to the one-way conversion, and everything over on Wilson Street is already taken care of, we don't have to worry about barriers there, or lanes changing or anything, then the only thing that changes is on the north side of River Street, just one barrier has to go up. Isn't that correct?
Yeah. And I think that's, I think that's what staff envisions, that it's, we just make one closure at State Street. I think what Alderman, you were had alluded to was, you know, moving, moving tables out into the center of the road every Thursday and using the whole road for tables, and then every Thursday, Friday, or Sunday, moving all the tables back again. That's, I guess, what staff has always been opposed to, is doing this setup and takedown every single week. But no, you're right, that if, if the only thing is the barricades at State Street have to get dragged across in order to close the road, that's technically all you'd have to do.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was more alluding to, is that if, if the table setup was. Yeah, that's, that's what I was more alluding to, is that if, if the table setup was, you know, we create a lane of traffic through River Street and the tables are outside of that lane, so that, you know, and again, it has to be safely done so that it's, it's not, it's not difficult to, to manage, and people don't understand what they're doing as they drive down there. So I don't know how easy that is to set up, but that's, that's my view.
Well, I guess what I was thinking too is, even if it maybe perhaps wasn't every single week of the summer that it's closed Thursday through Sunday, but let's say there's multiple weeks that that happens with the one-lane conversion, where all of River Street is shut down, but it's not up to staff to move tables about, that could be up to the business that has requested the closure also.
Yeah, we, it should be simple enough, it should be simple enough to close at State Street that that could be done by Main Street, or that could be done by the businesses. I agree.
Okay. It's one thing that is working very successfully up in St. Charles, in their, within their road closure, the businesses themselves have carved out that section that they are responsible for and taking care of and have a perimeter for.
And that's where I think I envisioned this going, you know, and I joked about it for years, that we need to get rid of the gate that's down at, by Walmart on, off Kirk Road. That'd be a perfect place for a gate, would be at the end of that street on River Street. We, we could repurpose it, we'd be reusing it, recycling it. It would be a good use. We just have to make sure that it would pass whatever. I know, but, you know, I joke about that, but I think that that's the kind of thing we have to think about, is this, this is not your typical street. We've turned it into something different than just your typical street. And we need to think that way about how do we utilize it moving forward? And I think taking IDOT out of the mix is probably the biggest key to it, and providing a way where, where we have more control of the street and be more responsive to businesses that want to program things on the street and want to be able to shut the street down, but also give them the ability to utilize more of the street for their own use, and put that onus on them to be able to, you know, have their own tables, have their own layout where they have it, and for them to take care of that, you know? And it's basically us allowing them to do that. Because I think as we move forward 10, 15 years from now, we may have other streets, we may have other sections downtown that are going to be similar to this, with really wide sidewalks or, you know, areas where we, you know, use that street similar to the way River Street gets used now. And I think with, you know, 10 or 15 feet on each side of it, there's still enough room for one lane of traffic. And all we have to do is meet, you know, what the fire department needs to get a truck through there, and what, you know, city crews need to be able to get through there to maintain it, then I think we're, we're able to utilize that street for so much more on a year-round basis.
Yep. I totally agree. That's, that's a definite gem we have in this town. And so, you know, I think the best-case scenario is we get total control by having to go, having that one-way southbound. But in the meantime, if it's, as Gary's saying, it may take some time, you know, I think we should also plan to, to block it off again, if, if it's not going to be. So we don't come, so spring doesn't come around, the farmer's market starts, and we're scrambling at that time. So, you know, is it possible to keep both balls in the air, the, you know, the, well, how long does it take to get IDOT to approve the permanent closure?
Not difficult.
Okay.
No, that's not difficult, but we can't do, we can't do like a closure like we've done the last three years and be under construction at the same time.
Right.
Those two can't happen at the same time.
Gotcha. Yeah.
And I think if we had to, I think we could, you know, to allow the construction to happen there and the farmer's market to happen, we can figure that out. They can move, you know, more into the parking lot that's up there. We do own that, so that's not an issue. I think there's enough space there. And then it's our own streets up there that we'd be blocking off without having to go back to IDOT for any approval to close it and be able to utilize that area for the farmer's market. So it can be there during the construction, because I think it's really bad if we move the farmer's market. You know, it's, it's just become a fixture in the area. It is, and block over from where it usually is is not going to kill it. Moving it to the other side of the river, moving it somewhere else will hurt it. Okay. Abby?
Other than the pedestrian controls, are there any other things that we should worry about IDOT not approving us? Or is it just a waiting game? And if it's just a waiting game, is there, you know, letters we could write to our state reps to have them put pressure on our state staff?
I thought we had a connection between the mayor and somebody at IDOT that we might have to lean on to try to, to get an answer back. Just, we need an answer and we need to get it done. We talked about this before the season started last year, and we still don't have an answer.
Exactly. Like, like, it's time. It's just time to be done with discussion.
Road trip, go down to IDOT and just show up.
I'm in.
We'd like to have our permit back so we can get this done.
Yeah.
We asked for a lot of permits, though, so.
Hey, Kena, do you have a comment, or?
Leah does.
Okay.
Leah?
I just want to also say what Tony was saying. Like, I think most of us agree that River Street is a very unique part of Batavia that draws people from our community, from other communities. It's very unique. It has a wonderful vibe. There's times where I'm just driving down Wilson, and I just glance over there, over the barricades, and I'm just so happy with what I see happening down that street, primarily in the evening hours in the warm months. I would love to see more community places like that pop up around our town as we develop. I know, like, what happens down here at the Depot Pond Pegbon Center, like, there's fun community activities that happen there. And I think Batavia, we should really lean into these type of places and get creative with how to make them happen. And it will take creativity, and it will take some adjustments and, you know, knocking on IDOT's door to get stuff done. But I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it for our town. I think it's worth it for our businesses. I know that some businesses feel, feel perhaps an unfair advantage. I, I hear that. I understand that. I do think that overall, having this communal space is very good for our town overall. I, doing the one-way conversion during the day and the early part of the weeks could help the other businesses get the movement that they need. But I think we should really figure out how to keep what has been created there, keep it moving forward. This could be a really positive thing that has come out of COVID, that we were kind of forced into it, and something beautiful has happened. And I think we should figure out how to keep that beauty there. I do agree with Tony that if we're not getting a response for IDOT for the one-way to happen next summer, that we close it off again, deal with ugly barricades, keep that moving forward. And then the following year, we'll figure it out again. But I don't necessarily think opening it, to reclose it, you know, like next summer, I think we continue going with what has, what has been happening these last few years.
Would you, just to get clarification on it, like St. Charles is doing, and having the business owners take responsibility for an area so that they look a little bit nicer?
I, I do think we put a little bit more responsibility on the business owners who are using certain sections of it more. Now, I also know anybody could use those tables that we have, we have had set up the last few years. I could have, you know, gone to Coco Tito's, bought something, come back down here, sat at any table I wanted to, because it wasn't directly connected to any of the specific businesses.
Right. And maybe we leave a couple that are like that, but right now, we've got a dozen. And I, myself, have heard reports that people are bringing coolers into the area of their own food and their own drink, and that certainly goes, completely flies in the opposite face of why we put those tables out there.
Right. And also, put it on the businesses to help keep the area clean and looking good and, you know.
And that's the other part about them having an area that they're responsible for, because that doesn't really happen today. We hire a cleaning crew to come in Thursday through Sunday, you know, the area.
These are the creative ideas that we need to continue discussing.
Right. And I think that, that maybe adds a little less of the, well, you're doing this for this area of town, and you're not helping anybody over here. If, you know, we always decided to have that street to be the space that it has evolved into, and it keeps evolving. And I think one of the things is if the businesses then, you know, program that their own sections of the street, then that's truly why they invested in having the building there, putting the restaurants there, putting the bars there, putting the things that they want benefit from that street. That's, you know, their benefit of being there. And?
Um. Do the businesses then get charged for taking that part of the street and that section, kind of like a parklet that we've come up with?
Typically, it's a few hundred dollars for the entire season for them to lease that space.
We had that agreement with-
But we haven't done that for the last couple of years, correct? Because we've just given it to them. Are we going to now charge them?
Um, no, we actually charged them this year for anybody who is utilizing public space.
That's correct. We've been charging, anybody that's been using public space, we did charge for that.
And I think that that's sort of part of the angst out there, is that there are businesses on North River Street who can avail themselves of all of the free tables because they're out in the public. So I think this really levels the playing field to, in the next iteration, have each business establish what their perimeter is and take care of it.
You know, and I think the last couple of years really was a great learning experience of what we could accomplish there. And this is just, again, evolving further into, okay, now you get the chance, as the business owner that's on that street, to pick out the spot you feel you can control and run and program, and now you get to do it. But the space is still there.
So if we still have public tables, and let's say I go do carryout at a certain restaurant, from anywhere on that block, I can still go sit at one of the public tables with that? Does that include liquor?
It's what you guys decide.
Yeah, and we-
You're the policymakers.
We've talked about that, that that may be one of the things we have to talk about is, do we draw out a map for downtown and say, okay, we've got park benches here, we've got seats out here, you know, well, you're plane checkers, you get to sit there and have a beer from local, you know, brewer. I mean, that's something that, I think this is another discussion we have to have, and it's, again, involving our downtown to allow these things. I mean, we haven't had issues with that. I mean, how many mornings on Saturday have we had, you know, Bloody Marys and Mimosas available on River Street? And I guarantee you, they didn't all get finished on River Street. But I don't think that we've seen issues from it. So I don't think it's a problem, and I don't want to try to create one, but I also think we need to think differently about, again, the rest of the downtown.
And the hours from eight to 12 on a Saturday are a little bit different
Right, yeah.
than what goes on even, even on North River Street, you know? Stories come back to me from local business owners who say that someone comes into their business and orders the pitcher of beer and gets the cups, and when the business owner comes out to collect the pitchers or whatever at the end of the night during the serving, they didn't really see those people come in with, to be carded in the ordinary fashion that somebody would. And so when you have service of alcohol, and it's allowed anywhere, you lose control over being able to make sure liquor isn't being served minors.
That just sounds like something we need, we need a future discussion.
Right. Yeah, we definitely need to discuss that. Does anybody from the audience want to talk on this tonight? Anything? Sarah, you want to say that? Well, we've got somebody coming up to the mic here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick thought. Could we look into making River Street a DORA for next summer and put some, I don't know if it would be an ordinance or just some parameters for the consumption of alcohol on that street, and maybe that would help curtail some things that have been observed? I don't know, we talked about that before, and I haven't heard anything else about it since.
It actually has been a DORA, because there, there has been no control over somebody buying a beverage and sitting down in the public dining area. So it actually has been in the past, but now we're asking the business owners themselves to take control of whatever perimeter that they're using for the outdoor seating. Then I think that we would need to consider whether we allow public alcohol consumption at the public tables versus the business owner controlling the alcohol consumption within their own perimeters.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, all we need is your name for the record.
My name is Don Blatt, living in the fourth ward. The thing I worry about with this, with the one-way, is yes, you could put a barricade up to stop a car, but who's to tell the, you know, who's to clue the children or the dogs or the people in general when it's open, when it's closed? You've seen how it operates on the weekend, even during the week. It's just a family gathering place. And I, I thought that's what River Street was designed and built to be like. It's worked out very well these past, get people from different towns coming up and down the bike path, using it, stop, it's a, it's a typical stop for anybody on the path. You have, and that's, it worries me. I mean, you're only, you only have to divert one block to 25 to get to Wilson. And if you're only going to make a right, you're going to go over the bridge. And you can only get so many cars over the bridge anyway, so having two, you know, having three outlets, Wilson and 25, and then River Street, I don't, I don't see the advantage of having any traffic on it during the summer. Maybe I'm missing something. You're only going to get so many cars over the bridge. As far as restaurants, you know, controlling their little part, maybe, you know, to clean up or whatever, but a lot of, a lot of people are utilizing all the, all the restaurants at, at the same table. Some bring Thai food in from down to dusk, some from River Street, and, oh, I want a taco. I've, I've seen multi-restaurants at one table. You got, you know, back to the, you know, you got servers coming out of the restaurant, crossing on both sides of the street, you know, and just crossing, you know, there's not a, not a foot trap. They put cars in the mix during the summer. It's scary talk. Yeah. It, it's worked so well the way it's been. I hope to be a way to keep it the way it is. And to spend more money in, in putting the curbs back in it than money to take out is, is my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Good evening. Nick Nigley. I'm a two-year resident of Batavia. I previously had been interested in moving Batavia for several years, but had to sell my wife on the concept. And I made slow progress on it. I'm getting convinced to come here until our first experience on River Street to celebrate Oktoberfest. My kids watched the wiener dog races, danced the polka, got their face painted, while, while my wife and I witnessed one of the best displays of community spirit I've ever seen. River Street was a stepping stone for my family-to-b beginner life in Batavia. Additionally, as a business owner that supplies many of the restaurants in downtown Batavia, and as a customer to those restaurants, I'm well aware of the joy that this space brings to its guests. Having the kids run down the middle of River Street and being able to enjoy a beverage and a meal without worrying about them getting hit by a car is a wonderful place to be as a parent. The, I think it's called the Wunert, is a true treasure of Batavia. This should be dedicated to bringing residents a unique, safe, fun, outdoor atmosphere. It's truly unique to the Fox Valley. As an aside, before I came here, I was over at Pal Joey's, and John was cooking pizzas and wanted me to tell you that he shares my same sentiments, that are, that I ask you to please consider converting North River Street to a one-way southbound road, closing the traffic permanently, and- the traffic permanently and allocating funds to pay for the project. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I'm fine with it being closed one way. Not really big on it being closed completely throughout the whole summer. It does hurt the retail side of the street a little bit. I have seen the last two years of sales go down and it's very coincidental or it has to do with the road being closed. But if there's some way to have one way, we are known as the closed road. So even going to an event this weekend, I'd said, you know, go on down, we're on River Street, the first thing they know it as is the closed road. Um, which I don't know if that's the best thing to be known as. Um, but I'm fine with it one way. I think it would be great. Um, I'm a little worried about the kids running around, um, but if it's an event where it is a closed road, that makes sense during the day. We don't really have as many children out there, walkers or bikers. At this point in time, I've found that that, that traffic has died during COVID. Nobody wants to ride through the tables and the chairs. They stop at the bridge and they go to the left versus the right, which is what I saw a lot of when I first moved in. Um, but I think the one way would help that bring some more of that biking and walking traffic back. Um, so I'm not opposed to that at all. I just, I know it's, it might take a little while to build what you guys want, so it might go into the July, maybe August, I mean, it is government in construction, so who knows? So maybe another closed road for next year. Am I excited about that? Absolutely not, I'm going to be completely honest. However, I know that in the end it will be a very, very nice road to be on. It, it is a gem in downtown. It's a gem for any city to have something like that. Um, so I'm okay with it being closed southbound, northbound, right?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I think Missy brings up a good point, especially with the bikers where a lot of them will stop before they start going down the road. And I know that the path actually connects at one of, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it does connect at the stairs, but to truly have it, it actually goes down. Maybe we needed to do a better job at directing some of the bikes on where the bike path goes and connects to where they don't have to dismount off of their bike and walk it down the stairs. I think it's one of the alleys that they ride down.
Newsboy alley.
And that would help give some of the, you know, kind of direct the bikers past the businesses.
No, the bikers don't have-
And past Missy's spot.
And the, one thing I will say is because I've been down there a lot on Saturdays, bikers don't have any problem going down the middle of the street during the farmer's market. Other peo-, other people might, other, other people might have an issue going down the street with them, but bikers have no problem going down the street.
And one more suggestion that I thought of, um, is because we have the drones now and we always talk about how much traffic is really there, you know, maybe we need to start doing our own counts of traffic, you know, certain time during the day, bring up the drone, let's see how many people are on River Street at that point.
We actually will have a good tool for counting the number of people at events through the, um, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has a geofencing tool and we'll probably be able to avail ourselves and, and that might be even more accurate than what we can capture sort of in pictures and trying to count heads.
I think, I think that would be an effective tool that would help us, you know, also communicate with the businesses of, you know, here's what we're seeing as far as the traffic at different points during the day. And that could help lead some of our conversations of, do we completely close it down? Do we keep it open? Do we maybe make some modifications? You know, I think just having some of that, some of that data would help.
So I think at this point, we've got the idea that we need to get an answer back from IDOT. I think that's first and foremost, we need to just get that answer back and then make our decision, do we go at it and try to get the one way done this year before the real big busy season happens down there? Or do we make that decision and say we're going to close it again?
I think we make the decision without having the notice from IDOT because I think it's a decision we're going to make either way. It just depends on how, whether we close it, how it's going to get closed. We need to file for permit, do we need to?
I guess because if we do get the permit, we don't have to use it.
In all likelihood, we will get, you know, the notice or we would have closed it.
I kind of feel like we were, pulled that answer last time or last year.
It has actually been two years. So it, I mean, it has been passed back to us and we were required to do a traffic study and then it was passed back to us and we were required to do additional engineering to create the bump out and replace the traffic signal. So it's sort of in its third pass of review, but two years is an extraordinarily long time for IDOT to be taking with this simple of a project.
Gary, are you still there?
Yeah, I am, and I'm, I'm pondering the timeline. So I, 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 I keep thinking IDOT's going to give us approvals anytime, but months go by and they still don't give us approvals. We're now coming into the holiday season, we're both through Thanksgiving and, and Christmas and New Years. If we get approvals from IDOT in early 2023, there's nothing that would prevent us from going out to bid and starting construction, you know, in spring of 2023. Um, the other option is, is if we don't get approvals in early 2023, you know, it sounds like council doesn't want to start construction like in June or July and, and build and get it finished. Sounds like they'd rather wait till the following year to start again early in the spring and try and get it act out. So that, I, I guess from a timing standpoint, I, I understand that and if we can't do it early spring of 2023 to start construction, we'll wait, we'll wait a year. We'll do it in the early spring of 2024.
Gary, how long do you think construction is going to take?
Well, that's what I said earlier. Before, I was pretty confident that we would have it done. We started by, you know, early April, we could have it done by Memorial Day. Based on this past summer's construction season, I don't have that confidence anymore. Contractors are, are scrambling right now and so I, I, I don't, I, I would not say it's a two-month project anymore. It's probably just to be safe, I would say it's probably a good three-month project. Give myself another 50% of, of timeline.
What would be our next step or in your mind, what would be our next step if we want to try to pressure IDOT to give us an answer? Does that letter need to come from the mayor with all of us as council members signing on it? Does it need to originate from you or Laura? I mean, where, where should we go next when we get an answer?
They've gotten about a half dozen letters from me, so clearly I'm not having much impact.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, it's, it's, it is, it's going to have to come from on high. Someone's going to have to, from on high in IDOT, you know, say to the traffic signal folks, what's going on here? Why, why can't we get this one pushed out the door?
My recommendation would be to contact one or more of our state elected officials. I'll do that and get them because they're in Springfield right now.
Okay.
And so they can just walk over to the, or drive over to the office and ask what's going on.
Okay, why don't we do that as our next step so that we, we get, try to get some type of answer back? I mean, if they tell us it's going to be January 15th, they'll have an answer by, then I think we have a chance to do that. If not, we can make that decision during January. So that way we get this, you know, one way or the other, we get an answer and move forward with it.
And Alan, once we have an answer from IDOT or not, I would like it to come back to council to start discussing, um, what will closure look like on River Street even with a one-way conversion for the summer months? You know, do we, what are the possibilities of closing it for the weekends, for the kids to be able to run around and for to have that same community feel over, you know, every single weekend? And then also to discuss, uh, alcohol consumption and responsibility of the businesses and all of that and start getting some of that nailed down.
Because that was one of the things that early on that, you know, I said, you know, I really felt like I had no problem closing the street down, but I want to know what's going to happen out there. I just don't want the street to be closed and nothing going on out there. If there's no programming for it, if there's no event or anything else that's happening out there, I just don't want the street to be closed off. We, we dealt with that for a year over on, um-
Water Street.
Water Street and, you know, that became a real problem because here you have a street blocked off and nothing occurring on it.
There is another business opening on River Street, right? Soon?
I, the wine cellar or Geneva Winery?
Yeah, right.
So there's even more on getting at, it's more potential for, uh, events and things to be happening.
Right, and realize too, we also have Pal Joey's back down there. So that's a whole nother group of people that, you know, easily can walk in, pick up a pizza and walk out, sit down at a, at a table. So, you know, from-
Which will be, it's something to think about because when the road's not closed, I, you know, I'm not exactly sure the orientation of the one way. That's why we should come back and take a look at that one way.
Right.
Because I don't know how much more space that those businesses are going to have to be able to serve people outside of their door on that side versus the other side of the street.
Right. And, and that's again, why I think once we get the approval and then we decide how we're going to handle layout of the street to maintain that lane, whatever fire department and public works wants for the lane out there, then that's what we have to figure out how to utilize, what, what remaining space there is on the street. Okay. Anybody else have anything on this or are we done with this one? Okay. And we move on to item 19, which is project status. Laura?
So just a couple of things. Um, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus of CMAP has invited municipalities to participate in a new EV readiness program to prepare to meet the growing demand for EVs and EV charging infrastructure. And the city of Batavia has made application to join, uh, what's being called the EV Ready Cohort. And as, if we are selected to be participants, we receive free technical assistance and training in a variety of critical areas as we move toward being designated as an EV Ready community. There's a bronze, silver, or gold level that you can accomplish by completing a number of fundamental tasks that are part of the EV readiness checklist. And our own Scott Buening was part of the, um, the committee who was selected by the caucus to develop that EV readiness checklist. So, um, we are hoping to be selected and they have one cohort that is going to be starting in January and another one that's going to be starting this summer. We'll find out, um, if we get to be one of the lucky ones chosen. Uh, the remodeling project at City Hall is progressing on schedule and has only had a couple of minor effects on operations. But we are headed into a very messy part of the project. So if you can avoid coming down to this area, you may want to avoid it for, uh, the remainder of this week when, um, the excavation is about to begin to replace the water main. And so that is going to, uh, to be, have us down to one lane out here at, um, the best of times. So there will be flaggers present to try to help people to get through there, but like I said, if you can avoid the area, um, that would be great. Our leaf pickup is, uh, going amazingly well. The crews have been very efficient. Um, they've worked the past two Saturdays in order to keep up with the fact that, I mean, some years where we worry because the leaves like stay up in the tree until December. Well, not this year, they all came down at once. You know, and we were kind of fortunate in that regard, but it, it has meant that the crews have to work, uh, really hard. And it's a good time of year just to remind people to, um, when they're maintaining their leaves in their yard, go check out where the storm drain is and make sure that, um, that isn't getting all covered with leaves. Uh, the city does that while they're out there picking up the leaves from the parkway, but we certainly can't be everywhere and it really helps a lot to avoid flooding issues. Um, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions about specific projects for me.
So the leaf pickups, follow-up. Um, are they going to still be doing alternate weeks on either side or is it just, they're just cruising around grabbing?
No, they have a specific plan, uh, and I, I believe that next week is the last week for pickup. Gary, do you have the schedule?
This week, this week they're on the east side during the final pickup on the east side and next, next week will be the west side and the final pickup on the west side. And people can track progress on the website. There's a map that's updated every day as to where the crews have been and where, what areas have not yet been picked up.
And if you happen to miss the, um, the city pickup, um, waste management will, uh, pick up craft bags filled with leaves during the month of December for free.
Yeah, I just know that my ward's got a lot of leaves right now.
I hear you.
Oak trees.
Yes.
Lots of oak trees, Woodland Hills.
Yes, aptly named.
Yes.
Do you have a question, sir? Come on up and use the microphone, we need to make sure-
It gets recorded.
Recorded and broadcast so we hear it.
This is Don Blatt again. Uh, it's not a question about the leaves, but the project in, in general. Months ago, probably almost a year ago, they tested, they dug and tested my water main for lead and they found it was lead. I was curious on where that project is at.
We, I've got good news to share with you, that the reason why we were doing the, um, lead line survey, um, the city has been awarded a forgivable loan in the amount of $4 million. So any of you who returned your card saying that you've got a lead service line, we're going to be reaching out to you to talk about replacing that for you.
Where's that, I mean, what's that on that?
Um, it will be done next year. Work that will be done next year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any others?
I do.
Kenan?
Um, I saw pretty good progress on, um, movie theater. It was pretty nice. So I know, uh, families and kids and sports teams, swim teams, basketball teams and can't wait to go use it. Also, uh, we'll get some ice cream and burgers at Culver's. A lot of kids love that place.
I was in, uh, I visited our new Chipotle last week and I had to stand on the sidewalk and wait to get in the front door. It was so weird.
Yeah, I don't think I've driven past any of those new ones out there that don't have a line outside at, you know, lunchtime or dinnertime. They're just packed.
Packed.
So that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're going to need a motion to go into executive session and there will be no action after our executive session. So move.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Salfa. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Zaron? Bobo Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ruzado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chanset? Salfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazi?
Aye.
We have 11 and a 14.
All righty.